Ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Well, good evening, everyone. We'll call to order this regular meeting of the Willow City Council for Tuesday, August 27th, 2024. Item 200, gentle pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Button, would you do the honors, lead us?
I'd be honored. Please stand and salute. My pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Item three, roll call. City Clerk Amos Hoover, please.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Button.
Here.
Councilmembers Hudson and Sprague are absent tonight, and Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Thank you, Amos. Item four, changes to the agenda. City Manager Marty Brown. Good evening, Marty.
Good evening. There are no changes.
Okay, thank you. Item five, presentation. Item five A, adverse childhood experiences, also known as ACE, ACE. We're going to receive a presentation on adverse childhood experiences study results presented by Dr. Jared Garrison. Marty, before we turn it over to Dr. Garrison, do you have any remarks or comments this evening?
I do not. I'm just excited because, as I was just saying to Dr. Garrison, I'm I am familiar with this topic, and I met one of the poor doctors who did the study, and so I think it's going to be very interesting. Many years ago, so I look forward to your presentation, Dr. Garrison.
Thank you. Well, hello, Dr. Garrison. Glad to see you. Thank you for coming in and presenting tonight. It's always good to see you.
Thank you guys so much for allowing me to be able to come and and to talk to you, and thank you. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Our pleasure.
So what I'm gonna, kind of the big thrust of what I'm I'm hoping to do in this is just to really talk about how how when we when we support our youth, that it pays off. And it makes bigger differences than than when than what we would normally guess. And that's really, if you take one thing away from this, is that there is great data that says, hey, when we help out our kids, that it makes a big difference. So there, go ahead and go onto the next slide. There we go. So there was a study that was done. It was done by Dr. Amda and Dr. Falletti. It was, she was making reference to Dr. Falletti. And what they what they did was is they they took about seventeen thousand people in San Diego, and they looked at what kind of things happened to them and what differences that it made in their life later on. And what they found was is that there were there were ten things that that happened to kids before the age of eighteen. And when those things happened, that there was significant impacts in their life. And they include things like abuse, whether that be physical, sexual, emotional, whether it's whether there's neglect, whether it's physical or emotional, and household dysfunction, like mental illness to the point where the parent's not able to care for the child, maternal violence, so domestic abuse, divorce, and incarcerated, somebody who lives in the home who ends up having to go to prison, and as well as substance abuse that impacts their ability to parent. Let's go ahead and go to the next one. And what they found was is that they were common. And I think, at least for me, a little bit more common than what I would have guessed. You can see that we've got about twenty-seven percent had some had substance abuse in the home. You know, parent parental divorce was twenty-three percent, mental illness seventeen, domestic abuse thirteen percent, six percent for behavior and for criminal behavior. And I want to point out once again, this is San Diego Kaiser. So this is not Glen County. Right? This is this is upper-middle class, mostly college educated. And yet they still had these these significant things. Fifteen percent had emotional neglect, ten percent had physical neglect, abuse, emotional eleven, physical twenty-eight, and sexual twenty-one percent. Isn't that kind of sad? One in five people in San Diego in Kaiser had had sexual were sexually abused before the age of eighteen. I'll share some data. It's about one in four for females in Glen County. About one in four females in Glen County. Isn't that sad? Let's go ahead and go into the next slide. This is what the numbers look like for Glen County. There, overall, we've got more adverse childhood experiences here than what what they have in than they had in San Diego. Actually, we've got quite a bit higher for than the state average does, which isn't surprising. Butuck County, interestingly, has the highest percentage of of Aces in the state. And that's not taking into account other stressors like, you know, fires and everything else that we seem to deal with on a fairly regular basis. So we had over forty percent said that they had been emotionally abused. Divorce was high. Twenty-four point four percent were physically abused. So you can see there's there's some, you know, there's a fair amount of these adverse childhood experiences in our community. Let's go to the next slide. When we look at how it breaks down, only about a third of people don't have any of these adverse childhood experiences, and about two-thirds have at least one. In Glen County, we've got, so for two or two of them, it was sixteen percent, and we're at twenty-four percent. So we're, you know, we've got some some more adverse childhood experiences. Go ahead and go on to the next slide. So this is, and I know you can't read this, but I'll just kind of go over some of the numbers, and it's more of almost kind of a reference. But later in life, what are the impact of those adverse childhood experiences? And for those, the chances of having a stroke later in life, if you've got four or more of these of these adverse childhood experiences, you are twice as likely to have a stroke. You are two point one times as likely to end up having a heart attack. You are you are thirty-seven times more likely to take your life. You are, your chance of of cancer of any time is two point three times. Yeah.
So this data was gathered from young people and then carried forward to their aging cycles. So there's a full spectrum of a child who experienced Aces to an adult, that child, who experienced these, some of the numbers of these. Is that true?
Yes, it is, sort of. So the study actually was done in nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-seven. Okay, so we do have data that's prospective, where we have, we know the kids and how many adverse childhood experiences they have, and we have some data, you know, data that says, you know, gee, as they get older, this is kind of what what we end up seeing. But most of this data is, tell us about what's happened in your life. And then they they say on that, they take that test, those ten questions, and how many they got. And of course, you know, there's wide ranges in all of that, right? I mean, there's lots of, but what I think it does is it says, gee, what happens to us when we're young makes a difference. Yeah. And going on, you know, you know, one of the numbers on there that that I think is particularly staggering is is that the chances of trying to take your life, thirty-seven point five times more likely if you have four or more of those adverse childhood experiences. And when we talk about IV drug use, this is really a staggering number to me, but if you've got, if you're a male and you've got six or more adverse childhood experiences, you are forty-six times more likely to use IV drugs later in life. Is that pretty dumbfounding? There was a study that said if you had six more adverse childhood experiences, your life expectancy has decreased by twenty years.
Oh, no.
Twenty years.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Just wanted to ask, or, because I'm just trying to recall, you know, my recollection of the ACE like from sixteen years ago. But one of the things I remember was that Dr. Falletti really stumbled upon this out of research related to obesity and looking and in a field where he was trying to understand his patients, who many of them had trouble losing weight and were overweight. And it led to open this door to learning more about their history. And what he saw was a pattern of lots of these kinds of things and them being, you know, overweight and struggling with their weight. Am I wrong about that?
You are absolutely right.
I just thought you might want to understand that the seed for how he came to all of this was really through studying obesity, basically.
Isn't that interesting? So he found that some people, they just, they couldn't lose weight. Or sometimes they would be fantastically, do fantastically lose a bunch of weight, and then they would just drop off. And then they would come back and they were, they'd gain their hundred pounds back. And Dr. Amdo, who worked for the CDC, and I didn't give this history, but he was investigating people with quitting smoking. And he found that there is, he just, they both noticed, they actually happened by happenstance to to go to a conference and sit next to each other. And they were talking, and they both said, gee, it seems like there's something about, you know, these people who aren't successful, that they just had trauma in their, and their, when they were young. And that's what led to this study. And to be honest, the the data on this was so surprising to them, they sat on it for two years because they they couldn't believe what the data showed. Now, it has been reproduced in every continent. It's been reproduced all over the place. I mean, just all over the place. There's lots and lots and lots of data on this. Like I said, the original study was nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-seven. This is, the CDC refers to this as the most important study that nobody knows about. That's that's how the CDC. Any questions about any of of those health issues, or? Yeah, please.
So in this body of data and in the populations we're talking about, there are always exceptions. Is there anything in this study that identifies causative factors for these unusual exceptions like overachievement, or or I don't know what, just no apparent impact?
You know what? That's perfect. That's a perfect segue. That's the perfect segue into what we're going to be talking about. Let's go ahead and go into the next slide. So really what this all comes down to is it comes down to stress. Okay, that's whether it's causing high blood pressure and your heart rate to go up, causing heart attacks and strokes, or causing increased cortisol levels, which decrease your immune system, which lead to cancer, or emotional difficulties that end up making it so that we have a harder time learning and learning how to relate with others that interferes with relationships. And we could go into a lot of, I could go into a lot of detail about how the brain is changed when we have trauma, especially when we're young. And the younger that trauma happens, the worse it is. Yeah, it's really, it's really sad. But it really all comes down to 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 stress as to why that we have all these things. Go ahead and go on to the next slide. So one of the things that happens is is that, and and I'll point out first is is that this starts at conception. So the the hormones of the mother, if the mother is under stress, it affects the baby. It affects the baby. And, you know, we're way oversimplifying. But what happens is is either it's a good environment or a bad environment. Once again, oversimplified. But if it's a a good environment, then what happens is is the child ends up being able to learn how to form relationships and how to think rationally and to to just kind of grow up slower. When there's trauma, what happens is is that they're, they're always in a state of fight or flight. And so there, if you can picture a kiddo in a in a room, and he's always scanning the door. He's always aware of what's happening around him, except for the teacher. Right? Because he's he's scanning around what danger is coming around. Okay? One of the other things that's kind of interesting is our blood flow to our brains. So we've got kind of that, that you know, we call the limbic brain or the reptilian brain, or maybe maybe a better term is it's just kind of, you know, reflex mode. And we've also got the cortex where we do our logical thinking. Well, the blood flow either goes to one place or the other in general. And and it doesn't go very far. That's why, I don't know if you've noticed this, but when you get in an argument, usually nothing good comes about from it, right? And it's because we get emotional and we don't think logically as well. We just don't. I'll, I, there is this, there was a nurse when I was in, when I was in residency, and she'd been teaching advanced pediatric life support for, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years. She was gray-haired. She was, and this was down in Sacramento. She's probably teaching the class once every six weeks. And we got done early and and, you know, and I, she said, you know, does anybody have any questions? I said, yeah, sure. I said, have you ever had to use any of this stuff when you were outside of the hospital? And she turned bright red. And she said, well, a couple of weeks ago, my grandson was choking on a hot dog. And at the time, we taught you do five thrusts to the back, push them over, you do five abdominal thrusts, you bite back, then you do five abdominal, then you look in the mouth. Okay, is it there? Okay, we can go ahead and try and sweep it out. Now we just do CPR. But it was this big, huge thing. And she said, you know, I picked up my grandchild and I shook him until the, I picked him up by his ankle and I shook him until the hot dog came out. Right? All of this training taught it over and over and over again. But she got into that emotional part of her brain. And she didn't do the logical. And I I could tell you stories medically when I've seen that happen. You you can't, you don't want to be too emotional. You'd lose that logical part. One of the jokes in medicine is is that when you respond to a code, like when they're doing CPR, the first, the first thing to do is is check the pulse, your own. Because if it's going too fast, you're not going to make good choices. Right? That is what happens with these kids. It just makes it hard for them to be able to learn. Right? Of course, that's an extreme. I mean, that's, they're not usually so into that emotional standpoint. But in an overly simplistic way, that's kind of what happens and why it's so difficult for them to learn. Let's go ahead and go on to the next slide. One of the other things that's really interesting is, and there's, 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 there's good data on this, that what happens to us gets passed down to our kids. Okay? And so one of the famous studies is, we call it the cherry blossom study. And what they did was is they had these cherry blossoms. No, actually, well, they had, they had these these fake cherry blossoms, and then they sent in the smell of of cherry blossoms. And then they would electrocute the mice. Aren't you glad you're not a mouse?
Yeah.
Right? I mean, they're just the things that we've done to mice over the over the decades. I don't think they probably would allow this anymore. But but that's what they would do is they'd blow in the scent, they'd shock them. They'd blow in the scent, they'd shock them. Didn't take very long. They'd smell it, and they would go running and hiding. Right? Well, what they did was is they're, they're babies. They separated them at birth, and they gave them to mothers that hadn't been in that environment, and they were raised there. And then they put them back into the cage when they were adults, and they blew the cherry blossom smell. And they ran and they hid. This is really very, when I heard this, I was, I was very dumbfounded. And this went against, you know, what I was taught in medical school. But we know that, you know, interestingly, if you take veterans and they had children before they went to war, and they have children who after they went to war, the children who they had after they went to war will not live as long. We, our DNA is so amazing, it will change based to make it so that we're more likely to be able to survive. Isn't that just kind of amazing? And and, you know, going back to those kids that are always scanning the room and doing those things, that helps them to survive in a bad situation. Right? Does. The kid who's not worried about that, he does really good at paying attention to the teacher, but doesn't notice when somebody comes in the room and those things. There's advantages to this. But it isn't really a great thing when it comes to modern society. Any questions about that? Is that kind of surprising?
No, it's just the brain is amazing.
Yeah, the brain and and, yeah. And it doesn't change the DNA permanently. What it, what it does is it just changes which genes are expressed. And and we could go into a bunch of detail about it, but I don't think you guys probably care. Let's go ahead and go on to the next slide. So the good thing is is that there is lots of things that we can do to help with those stress levels. So this is, this is called the Stress Buster's Wheel. I'll share a website. It's the, it's the Glen Cares. It's a website that we put together. The Stress Buster's Wheel was kind of developed by the state of California. And they took at some of the things that are the most evidence-based that there are and for helping to decrease stress levels. And so, you know, quality sleep. Sleep makes a big difference. You know, I'm sure probably you guys are aware that if you have a, you know, you can compare alcohol, you know, blood alcohol levels to lack of sleep. It makes a difference. It makes a difference. You weren't aware of that? Yeah, they can. If you don't get enough sleep, you can be just as dangerous as somebody who's who's been drinking too much. Yeah, if you're not, if you're not getting enough sleep. Yeah. Quality sleep, balanced nutrition. There's all kinds of good data regarding eating well. Imagine that. Eating crud doesn't do us any good. It increases our stress levels. Physical activity, mindfulness, experiencing nature. I thought this was interesting. They they did a study where they had, they had people stand on the sidewalk. There's a nice pretty tree. Behind it, there was this big building. They went ahead and they checked blood levels. They had them stand there and just either look at the tree or look at the building behind it. Took blood levels before, took blood levels after. And the group looking at the trees, it went down significantly. And the group that's looking at the building, not. They can also show the VA has done studies where they can find that if they have a window that points to the outside and there's some kind of nature, that after surgery, people don't need as much pain medicine. Even putting pictures of trees and things helps decrease pain levels. Interesting stuff. Then, mental health and supportive relationships, and we'll talk a bunch about that. Yeah.
Mindful, mindful practices, examples. Think I know, but I'd like to hear your answer.
Yeah, absolutely. So mindfulness is, the idea is, is that is that we, we try not to live a distracted life. That's probably the easiest, easiest thing. So focusing on the here and the now. So there's, there's a bunch of them. One of them is is that, you know, for instance, that, you know, so say like you're really nervous before a presentation. You think about the soles of your feet, you just rock back and forth, and you feel how that feels. And you and that allows you to be able to decrease those stress hormones. There's a lot of them. There's a five, three, two, one, where there, what five things can you see? What, you know, four things can you, can you hear? I'm going to get these wrong, but, you know, it's your five senses. And, you know, doing those things makes a difference. It helps lower our stress levels. Yeah. Let's go ahead and go on to the next slide. So with this, we've got all these, essentially, we're kind of a little bit of a balance. Right? We've got good things happening in our life. We've got bad things happening in our life. That's stressful. We're taking out some of that stress. And I'm going to focus about some positive things. And that's, that's really, in a lot of ways, what I think is, you know, number one is, is I think that what happens to us when we're young makes a difference. And then this is the part where we talk about the incredible impact that, that when we support kids in particular, the difference that we can make for them for the rest of their life. So go ahead and go on to the next slide. So the Twin Towers, what they did was is they, they took a group of the kids and they, the ones whose parents fled or died from the Twin Towers. And then they compared them to kids who were miles away, who didn't know anybody, but were still in New York. And they were really amazed when they went through and they did this study, that they found that that sometimes the kids who lost parents were doing better emotionally than the kids who didn't know anybody there. And when they went through and they looked at it, what they found was is it had everything to do with having emotionally mature adults who cared. Emotionally mature adults who would listen to them, talk to them about their feelings. Didn't force anything on them or anything like that. But having multiple people like that in their home negated, in many ways, the loss of a parent. Right? And that's a pretty big, pretty big thing. Compared to the kids who oftentimes, and first they thought it was financial, because this was kind of the, the, you know, kind of some of the ghetto kids and things that they were comparing to. Didn't have anything to do with money. It had everything to do with that support. Go ahead and go on to the next slide. In nineteen fifty-seven, they did a study in Hawaii. Wouldn't you like to be part of that study, if you go over there? The reason they chose Hawaii was because the islanders don't move around much, and so it's pretty easy to follow them. And so they took every child who was born in nineteen fifty-seven, and they followed them throughout their, through, until they were in their thirties. And they looked at them at different parts. And they, and they had lots of questions to figure out what was happening in their life. And and what they found was that there was about thirty percent of them that they recognized were extremely high risk, a bad thing, you know. They didn't know what Aces were, but I think we've all known what kids who are high risk are, right? And so they recognized that there was that thirty percent. Interestingly, they, about thirty percent of those kids who are high risk flourished in life. And so they're like, okay, what is it that made the difference? They found that a home where there's structure, where there's rules, when there's chores, they found that if there was religion taught in the home, that the kids did better. But far and away, the thing that was most important was having emotionally mature adults who interacted with those kids. And and interestingly, for boys in particular, if they had a male figure who encouraged them to talk about their feelings, that made a huge difference. The subset, the group that did the very best, were young females who they, they sought after role models. So they would find a teacher that they liked, or a librarian, or somebody at church. And they would, they would go after that, that person as a role model. And they would do that continually at different stages in their life. And those children had almost no negative impacts whatsoever from these adverse childhood experiences, because they had lots of that adult support. Go ahead and go on to the next slide. So this is Dr. Bruce Perry. Probably the, arguably, the the world's best authority on trauma. Worked for the FBI. He's got, he's got a couple of books that are just absolutely phenomenal. But he says, the more healthy relationships a child has, the more likely he will be to recover from trauma and thrive. Relationships are the agents of change, and the most powerful therapy is human love. The most powerful therapy is love. Go ahead and go on to the next slide. So this is for the state of California. This is looking at positive childhood experiences. So we've got those ten adverse childhood experiences. And and we've got seven positive childhood experiences. And you can see the the numbers to the side. That's what percentage of positive of the population said that they had this. This was done a phone interview, and they just answered yes or no. Kind of almost a little bit sad. They're at the bottom. We've got able to talk to family about feelings. Less than forty percent of of people grew up in a home where they were able to talk about their feelings. Non, at least two non-parent adults took interest. Safe place, felt family stood by them in difficult times, felt supported by friends, felt a sense of belonging in high school, enjoyed participating in community traditions. And when you start looking at what those community traditions, that could be something that's religious, it could be something that's, it doesn't matter. It's, it's the community coming together yearly and being part of that, or periodically. Go ahead and go on to the next slide. So this is looking, so this is a phone interview. And this is looking at asking, so this is for, they asked them, in the last thirty days, have you had more days that are in good health than that or bad health? And you can see that that clearly, you know, down at the bottom, we've got zero Aces to the, to the left. We've got one to three Aces, and then four to eight Aces. And then you can see the light blue is for those who had more help. And the dark blue is is for those who didn't have, who didn't have as much help.
What's the age group of this data? What's the age group of this data?
So this is adults looking back on their youth.
50s, 40s.
Yeah, I don't know for sure. Yeah, I'm not sure. It's, it's, it's an adult population and they just, and you can see it doesn't matter. Um, whether you've had aces or not, it goes down. Obviously aces make a difference. But when you support kids, they do better with their help. I mean, that's just, that's the bottom line from that in my mind. Go ahead, go on to the next slide. So this is the same thing, only this is, um, for mental health. And you can see the difference that it makes. One with when you've got those adverse childhood experiences. But then the other thing is, is the difference that happens when we support. That makes a difference, doesn't it? It's a big difference, doesn't it? Let's go ahead and go on to the next slide. This is for being able to work and support your family. It's a big difference, isn't it? When we support our youth, it will pay off later. It'll pay off later. So go ahead and go on to the next slide. So this is essentially a pie, you know, kind of a pie graph where they've got all these bad things on the outside. Okay? And then they've got this black part that's in the middle. And that's the estimation of four more adverse childhood experiences on each of those. So you can see if we take IV drug use, that it's felt that about 78% of them you have four more aces. We look at suicide attempts, 67%. We look at serious persistent mental illness, 69%. Alcoholism, 65%. Incarceration, 61%. Life dissatisfaction, 67%. If we can help make these adverse childhood experiences go away, our societies, our communities would flourish. It'd flourish. They would do so much better. The reality is, is that's hard to do. Make it so that these adverse childhood experiences go away. But if we can provide support to our kids, it makes a huge difference. That makes a huge difference. Um, and that's, that's why I'm so excited about the idea of, of the rec department. Right? I mean, if we have a, a good, strong rec department where we can have these caring adults interacting with these kids, makes a difference, right? If we can have, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, they are, they're geared for this. They do training in adverse childhood experiences. They're trauma informed. Um, and I, I just, I, I think that putting, I, I know that it's, there's costs to it. And but I, I think that the, the payoff of that, not having people, I mean, if, what, what would happen if we were able to make it so that 61% of our incarcerated people went away? Wouldn't that be amazing? Right? And then you start talking about, you know, ability to support your family, right? And when we talk about if we can give them support when they're young, they're just more likely to be able to do that. And so that's, that's really my, my hope in coming to talk to you about the adverse childhood experiences is just, um, I, I think it's so easy to get caught up in all of these things that are about adults. But I think that we have so much more opportunity, um, as when we start working on trying to help out our kids. It's, it's interesting. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm reading a book that's called The Anxious Generation. And it talks, one of the parts of it is, is it talks a lot about how social media is just kind of destroying the mental health of our kids. And he says that our brain and how, you know, as we're developing, it's very much akin to cement. And he said, you know, you can take and you can write stuff kind of in cement a little bit. And, um, and it doesn't necessarily stick if it's too wet. But if you do it when it's, or when it's completely hard, you can try and draw on it all you want. It doesn't do anything. When we, what happens is, is that cement sets as we get older. And if we can make that difference for those kids, it just prevents so many problems later on. Any questions?
Yeah. Well, I mean, Big Brothers and Big Sisters, one to one with a child, a person independent of the child's experience, but there to support uh, self-esteem within the child. YMCA.
YMCA, yeah. Those programs are, I, I would love to see whatever we could do to bring those here.
And so we, we, the whole idea behind the pool was to show the young people and the families, the parents that we could do something, invest money in a tangible recreational thing that was difficult and maybe some set couldn't be done, but it's going to be done. Rick's got an idea for a gymnasium in that same park, a building where we can do interaction with our young people. And I just, I would love to see us really focus on what you're saying because it's investment in the future.
It's investment in the future.
And these kids who are successful will come back and the ROI will be their contribution when it's their time. So keep up the good work. I would like to do more than talk about this stuff. Isn't there a way to do tangible things?
Well, and so, um, you know, we are looking at some, some things. Um, we're looking at trying to do, uh, some things with, uh, uh, reading pals. So, um, ends up not nearly as long as like a big brother. Um, but, uh, you know, getting some one-on-one time with an adult. Um, it's actually interesting and, um, and at some point we'll have somebody come and talk about reading pals probably. If somebody doesn't learn to be, is proficient in reading by the, by the end of fourth grade, there's about a, a two-thirds percent chance, two-thirds of the time, they'll either end up in prison or they'll end up on welfare. Two-thirds. Two-thirds, isn't that kind of amazing? I kind of double-checked that because I just, I had a hard time. But we're, that is one of the things that we're hoping to do. We're working with seniors, um, with the senior centers. Um, I think that that's kind of a match made in heaven. If we can get young kids and seniors together, they've got some wisdom and some time. Um, you know, one of the comments that was made, uh, um, that one of the kids made, um, with, uh, to one of the reading power leaders is, he said, you know, I think that this is the longest that an adult has ever spent with me where they didn't ever check their phone. You know, I think that, um, I, I think that, I think we've got lonely seniors, which there's, there's a whole nother presentation I could do about loneliness and the huge impacts that it has. There's, there's, there's a lot. Um, so that's one of the things I'm really hoping to do is just to try and work with our seniors and get them involved. Um, presenting to tomorrow to, um, uh, the Willow Senior Center, talking about loneliness and following up with Orland, um, about trying to get them more involved with our kids to try and help them. I would love to partner and do whatever we can to help support our kids. I think that the more I study, you know, the more I look at what makes lasting differences, root causes, what's, what's the, the, the the big thing that's going to make the biggest bang for our buck? And every time I do, it just, it always comes back to the kids. We just, which is kind of funny because part of that is, um, the most evidence-based thing, which is something that we're going to be starting here soon, um, is something that to help out children with adverse childhood experiences is something called the Parent Cafe. And essentially what it is, is it's you bring parents together and you talk about, uh, you talk about, have them go around and, and as kind of almost like a group discussion, talk about, um, how to build strength in their kids. And, um, when we support the parents, it supports the kids. And so, um, and we've got some other programs. There's, uh, the county is doing a triple P program, which is really an evidence-based thing that helps parents. Um, and so we're working on doing some things, but I would love to look at other things and whatever we can be doing to try and support our kids.
I know within the medical profession, there are grant opportunities. Within the governmental arenas, there are multitude of grant opportunities. I, I see some entities in those two disciplines very successful in getting funding and getting things done. So I guess I would say within your world, if you find grant opportunities that we can partner on to build tangible things that do this, what we're talking about.
And there is, um, so, uh, the Glen County schools have been awarded a large grant. And so that's what's going to be helping pay for some of these things. And, um, yeah, I'd love to, um, you know, obviously I don't have control of that money, but we've got, uh, you know, and I don't know, there's, there's pretty stringent criteria as to what, uh, that money can be used for. But yeah, we're, we're looking at trying to utilize that money to the fullest. Try and get our kids who are at risk. We've, you know, met with Judge Eklund. She would love to, to really see what we could do to try and help support some of these kids.
So Doc, you, uh, you mentioned 1998. What, what year, you know, the, the ace, the ace studies, what, what year did they?
Yeah, it was 1995 to 1997. And I think, I think it was, um, yeah. And it was a couple of years later that they published it.
Yeah.
Cause they, 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 they got it and they went, really?
Well, nothing you said is surprising after I spent a lifetime of law enforcement. Uh, this is, I don't know if they're teaching, I, I'm going to find the answer. Uh, this too, in entry level, basic academies or, or, I mean, at this time. But fantastic information. I mean, all of this is so relevant because, um, it's, this, you, you brought back haunting memories of a lifetime of, of working criminal cases. The, the child abuse, the sex abuse, the domestic violence, the domestic abuse. It's just, you know, these upside down households and, and then, and I, I was in the business so long, still in part-time training. That it's multi-generational factor.
It is.
So I was on my third generation when I retired from full-time law enforcement. It was on my third generation of abuse victims. And some of them escaped, right?
Right.
But
That's the minority.
Don't. Absolutely. But everything you're, you're saying is so, is so relevant. And I just, I, I'm going to look into it and hopefully, uh, some of this is being taught to intra, intra-level law enforcement officers in the academy system. And I will find, I will find that answer, but, uh, it's just, you know, and a lot of folks are clueless, but there are bad people out there doing terrible things to young people, to, to their children, to their stepchildren, to, uh, you know, relatives, friends, whatever. I mean, just they're, they're animals. And, and so much of it is multi-generational.
It is.
And, uh, you know, the, the, the suicide rates, the incarceration, the recidivism, the whole thing. The, the welfare system, that, that, everything you said is so relevant. So thank you very much for bringing that.
Thank you. I, I hope I didn't take too much.
So many folks are clueless about, about all these negatives going on in society, in society. It's in, in, in the, uh, the rural counties, uh, in Northern California. It's even, and from my point of view, even worse.
It is.
Even worse.
There's, there's good data. So, um, the reason I took the job with health officer, um, and I, I'd been offered it a couple of times. Really it came down to, uh, a suicide. My, my son's best friend took his life. And I thought, what can we do to fix that? And it's led me to these aces. Uh, and it's led to, you know, reading literacy. I, I wouldn't be one, one of the things that I would be thinking about either, but you know, um, it, I, I think that there are so many things that just really come down to these, simply supporting our kids. And I, I think that the, we have become so isolated with our parenting. It used to be that a village kind of raised the child and we've got to go back to that. We've got to go back.
You have to have a permit to build a house. You don't have to have a permit to, to have a child and raise a child. And I mean, it, you know, and some people have no business.
Careful. Go, go, Gary.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, somebody's got to say it. So I, I just said it, but, uh, uh, yeah, it's, it, it, yeah, this is, yeah, this is an outstanding presentation, Doctor. And it's, and it is so true, so true. And, uh, you know, my experience wasn't based on scientific, scientific facts like you're dealing with. Just based on dealing with, with terrible situations on a, you know, day in and day out.
No, and, and you're not the only law enforcement officer who's, who's mentioned that. I, I heard somebody else talking about being in juvenile hall and, and, uh, here in Glen County years and years ago. Obviously it's not, we don't have one here now. Um, but they sat in, they had to be in the room when they were talking. And like one, there's like 15 kids and there was like one child who hadn't been sexually molested. And he thought, wow, okay, well. I, I, it's so easy to go to judgment on people, but I, I think.
Yeah, in this, in this county, so, so many, uh, you know, child abuse and sexual abuse referrals have always come in. It's, it's unbelievable. And, and like you say, the average ever citizen has no, has no clue. Of course, it's all confidential information.
Right.
You know, our child protective services, our CPS workers, they've got an absolute, it's, it's, it's a tough job, tough job.
Very tough.
I work, you know, we work hand in hand with CPS on a regular basis with these cases. But no, I mean, yeah, thank you for bringing this to light, Doc. It's, yeah.
Well, thank you. And I apologize, I took so much time.
Oh, no. Thank you.
So thank you. Thank you very much for the information. So gentlemen. Thank you, Doctor. Keep up the good work. Like you say, when you took on the health officer gig, you weren't really, you didn't really have time for another gig, but I'm glad you took it on. So anyway, so, yeah, yeah, thank you, Doc. Thank you, Doctor, very much. Moving on to item six, public comment in consent, uh, calendar forum. All matters in the consent calendar are considered routine and are approved by one motion and, and vote unless council members or the city manager first request that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent counter items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. And please address your comments to the mayor and council members and to staff and to the audience. And as a reminder by state law, the council does not permit it to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. First, uh, is there any public comment in reference to any matters not on the agenda tonight? Any public comment? No public comment? Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, any public comment in reference to our consent calendar forum? Item six A, our register approval. Consider approval of the general checking payroll and direct deposit check registers and item six B, our minutes approval, consider approval of the August 13th, 2024 meeting minutes. Any public comments on those items? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Thomas has moved to approve the consent calendar as presented. Councilmember Vodin has the second further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Passes a three, zero. Item seven, discussion and action calendar. Item seven A, potential projects using parks and recreation development impact fees. Discuss, consider and give direction to staff regarding the automation of softball field lights at Jensen Park and construction of a BMX pump track that would be funded by the Parks Facilities Department Development, excuse me, impact fee fund and are consistent with the city's 2008 Nexus Study, which outlines the required use of impact fees. This evening, Carissa Vasquez, our very capable staff intern is going to be presenting as well as Joe Benton Card, our Community Development and Services Director. And before I turn it over to Chris and Joe, Marty Brown, City Manager, do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments. I'm going to turn it right over to Joe to introduce the item and then Carissa can present.
Very good, very good. Joe, good evening.
Good evening, Council. Uh, yeah, first off, I just want to say, um, it's, it's been a pleasure to work with Carissa. She was one of our summer interns, one of two, um, choosing to spend our summer with us. Uh, you know, getting interns, you never know what you're going to get. And you hope to, hope to have a very, uh, self-motivated person that can hop right in and do that. And, uh, I just wanted to be known that she was, she was that. Um, and even she doesn't end up in government. She has a, a very good drive behind her. And so it was a pleasure having her. Uh, with that said, uh, the item here, uh, before you is looking at a couple of projects for using development impact fee funds. Carissa got together a presentation and did a nice deep dive into this semi-complicated, um, use of these funds. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll pass it over to Carissa to run through these slides and then follow up with questions.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Good evening, Carissa. Good to see you. Thank you for presenting tonight.
Um, well, first off, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to present and aid in these projects that Helen and I, our other intern, have been doing throughout the summer. And my project, as we know, is the Parks and Recreation Development Impact Fee. So like, why do we need to implement these fees? And like, why are we going to use them and like the usage of them in what type of way? So for the need for projects, why, why are we needing this? So. So for the need for projects, why, why are we needing this? So.
For those of us that are a little bit hearing impaired. Thank you.
Here we are. Um, so the public and the council both have shown interest in, um, upgrading the lights at our softball field. Um, they're outdated. Me and Joe have went out there and seen and like took pictures of all of them, like emailed Musco, which is our lighting, lighting people that we have out there now and like upgrading them. So we went out there and took a look at them. So we just wanna upgrade them and then using a controlling system which programs the lighting schedule so we, that we could use them in a way of setting them up for like timing. So instead of calling and like reserving the park for a day, we would, we would have this program that sets up a time for them to turn on and turn off, which would also aid in, um, the, the eliminating the chance of the keys being stolen and like the park being used without, without payment and all that, because me and Joe, when me and Joe did go out there, we saw, um, that you could just turn on the lights and anyone could use them there. So that's a problem.
Key rental to a breaker box in which the individual that rents the field would flip the breaker in order for the lights to be turned on. So, uh, kind of an archaic system at this point.
Definitely need to upgrade those. Joe and I saw that problem when we went out there to turn them on. We were looking for the keys and all that and, you know, we could just turn them on right there. So that's a problem we need to fix. There's, um, money being lost through that. And then the interest in the BMX pump track. This project had, had previous traction in the past. Um, there, there have been interest in people, other, other people constructing this, but it just never went through. And we, like, why, why else do we need this? Like, we needed it to, like, more community engagement and like.
Going back to the ACE's presentation, another, an option for kids to, to have something to do, to, um, be around each other, just another activity here in, here in Willow's. Um, that kind of blends in nicely with the more activities that we can provide to, to children. The, the better chance they have of, uh, you know, dealing with those traumatic experiences or, or avoiding them.
But the construction of this BMX pump track as well as upgrading of our, uh, softball field lights here at Jensen Park, they're both well within our, our budget that we have in this Parks and Recreation Development Impact Fee. So they are in our budget and they take limited resource and as well as time to complete. Please. So benefit, how do we benefit from this? So the automation of our softball lights at Jensen Park, uh, benefit the community by allowing more flexibility with the, the timing and as well as just having the set time for when they turn on and when they turn off to ensure who is there is supposed to be there. Um, the automation ensures convenience by securing consistent lighting and enhancing the overall experience for the community, making it easier for them to use the lights and the softball field here at this moment through the, the controlling program. So it's not so, um, as Joe said, a little janky.
It covers. And I'll, I'll, that's a good word, cause that, that is what it is. Uh, just a little, uh, so this automation program would allow us to, when we get a reservation and, um, you know, we'll be transferring to the, uh, the Tyler software for rec as well. So all payment for the reservation, they would click a box on there that says we want lights and pay the fee through that, through a customer portal. And then we would be able to access those light controls through a smartphone, um, through a computer, through a phone call. So it goes all the way from, from being able to do it on a phone to being able to call the company, um, and set reoccurring schedules. And basically we just fill it in like you would an Outlook calendar slot, seven to nine, letting the lights automatically turn on, um, along with a bunch of other controls, um, and data. We can see, uh, kilowatts used, kilowatts per hour cost. That gives us an idea of, wow, we really need to adjust these rates depending on what our, what our light use is. A little, uh, easier to, to figure out than looking at a P G D bill. So it would be a simplicity, simplicity of use on, on our end of it to schedule reoccurring events, um, set them seven days ahead of schedule, those kinds of things, um, versus go flip it for the customer.
So for the pump track, how do we benefit from this pump track? Well, as we said earlier, our, we just need more community engagement and like with the presentation earlier, it's in, it just helps with the mental health of our young students here and just anyone that wants to use it. So it increases public health, right, providing the outdoor physical activity for residents and anyone that wants to use it. So we could start with the youth here as stated before.
I'll just throw in there one more, you know, it'd be, it's a no cost thing, uh, unlike some of the, the sports programs and, and things like that, um, there's a fee associated with it. So that can be a barrier of opportunity for some parents or youth to this. So this would be a free of charge facility.
So in two thousand eight, there was a NEXUS study for these, there was a section in this NEXUS study for these projects for the Parks and Recreation Development Impact Fees. So there's about nine, nine projects that could be potentially be constructed with this, uh, fund balance that we have here. So for the, we, we're recommending that we upgrade our solar lights at Jensen Park and as well construct a BMX pump track, which there's two possible locations we will get into later. But we, there's the softball lights as two, as well as two new softball fields. The BMX for, BMX course, warm-up areas for softball pitchers, coin slash token operated softball lights, which kind of ties into our, um, our mobile, our mobile, how do we say it?
Automation system. So that's, that's the, the, uh, project in the NEXUS study that we're tying into this automated lighting system as coin operated lights, you know, the dated of the two thousand eight study.
As well as trees, two soccer fields, and then as well as adding more land, which kind of a little bland there. So we want more engaging opportunities for our, our city here. So we really just recommend that we upgrade our softball lights at Jensen Park to make them better for the community as well as construct a BMX pump track. And then the estimated cost for these projects, well, keep in mind that these estimated costs were from two thousand eight and they have not been updated since. So these costs may not apply currently or to this day. But we have some, some estimates for the updating the lights at Jensen Park. And those are very well within our budget. And we get into how much we have, uh, here later. But all of these are within our budget and the two that we chose would be, would leave us with a significant amount as well.
Uh, I'll just point out too, with the, the two hundred and eighty thousand estimate in, uh, coin token operated softball lights, I think that was, you know, considering replacing or putting in brand new entire lighting systems, whereas the automation is a, is an add-on package to the current lighting system.
So the available funding we have in this Parks and Recreation Development Impact Fee Fund is three hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars as well, sixty-seven cents. So for our softball light and BMX pump track, that is well over what we need. And it would leave us with a significant amount for other possible projects in the future, but we have very, it's not a problem to re, to upgrade our lights and construct a BMX pump track at this time. So as of now, there's two possible pump track locations. So the first location is at Sycamore Park in the existing parking lot near South Marshall Avenue. So we would use half that parking lot and we would use half of it for the pump track and then leave maybe the other half for some diagonal parking spaces for the park and the pump track and anyone else that would wanna use there. Here it is right here. So we would le, use the south end here and then just contract pump track there and leave the other half for park. And then our other, our other location is a corner lot, a corner lot on French Street and Butte Street. The City of Willow's are, currently owns a lot, so we already have it there for the City of Willow's and nothing's being used for it, nothing's happening with it for the future. So to construct a BMX pump track there is no hassle at all.
And just to add on to, when we, if we split a parking lot and kept parking and a pump track, we do get into probably a little additional cost for safety concerns, bollards, directional things. You know, you've got vehicles in the area of the pump track. Um, it does centrally locate it, but the, the French and Butte Street property, we would, we would be able to use that whole piece of land and there would not be a parking barrier needed as, uh, on-street parking would be available. I'm in there and it would get us something, you know, north, north of Wood Street, um, as a recreation facility, which we, we don't currently have. So it, both of them are potential, um, both of them are possible, but, you know, there's some, there's some good and bad of both of them.
Do you know the size or the square footage that a pump track would need?
I don't, uh, just judging by the, there's so different styles of pump tracks. I believe Orland is just built up mounds, been there. Um, it's not, not super large, but they also make pre-designed, it's almost like a molded, um, I'll say polymer, um, that you actually lay on the ground and then you kind of cover it with dirt. So there's different avenues. We could go the, the, the super cheap route and put some dirt mounds up and, you know, put a little design in there. Or you spend a little more money and buy one of these prefabricated kind of polymer tracks and place that in there. Uh, I think either of them would be ample space. I believe the total space is, uh, we got a half acre at this Butte and French Street. I don't know the exact size of the, the other lot, but it would, uh, that would have to be determined with, we wanted to keep parking there and how that would work out. So.
If I could just add, um, as some of you might recall, um, Hill Muller here in town was very interested in creating a pump track, excuse me, and, um, he and I looked at both sites and in particular, we were really seriously considering the site adjacent to Sycamore Park and that lot. Can you bring that up for me?
Yeah, Marty, could you point out where the, where the playground is right there in that? Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Well, the benefit of that park, and I think we should use this as we grow the city's recreation, is cumulative draw. If you isolate something, you lose the advantage of multi attractions and the effect of cumulative draw. You know what that is.
One thing I, I would say about the Butte and French Street site, um, because it is really the only substantial land that we own north of one sixty-two, um, I think whatever we do with it, whether the city just sells it or, or builds a park there, probably gonna, you know, especially there, but also at the other side, have community engagement because there is no other park north of one sixty-two. So, you know, I think a lot of thought would wanna be put into what you're gonna do there cause it's gonna be a draw for all the residents north of one sixty-two.
The thing about a park not north of, of Wood Street is that this isn't a park. It's a BMX or pump track, so it's not quite a match. Yeah. Uh, anyway, and I, I'm most interested because I know that Hill was highly motivated to do a BMX track. And, and I don't know, when we, I like calling it a pump track, cause a bicycle motocross is, is event oriented. It tends to be competitive in its nature. And that requires administration and, and other activities. I'm in favor of all of it, but I think it's really a pump track with, like the, the skateboard thing in Sycamore Park. It's really a dirt version of that. If I, is that correct? That's actually a question.
Yeah, it, it is kind of a dirt, it can be. I think there's more than one type of material. People use the polymer.
Yep.
Uh, material, they use dirt, um, but you, you know, you have right next door to it, uh, to the south side, um, are the, um, you know, horseshoes. Yeah, well, the thing that's interesting about that is there's a whole club that maintains the site. It's very, you know, they, they have competitions there. You know, there would be also the possibility of a group of people that wanna do something, rent the site to do their own competitions, uh, on a pump track site of the cit, that the city owns and do their own events, just like we do events in parks. I mean, I think there's a lot of opportunity there for something like that.
Discussing the parking spots there at that lot now. It's primarily what it's used for and the reason I asked you to point out where the playground was. It's a very well-used playground and, and there's all, you know, there's always parents there. I mean, my, my kids and grandkids played, you know, my grandkids still play there, uh, uh, sometimes. But, uh, uh, anyway, you know, as long as, you know, you've already, you've already looked at, you know, the need for parking spots there, that's, that's a positive and, yeah.
We also evaluated the volume of parking. I mean, it really isn't, it's not really ever completely full. I mean, it is used.
Most people, most people utilize the paved parking lot next, next to the pool, actually. Uh, but, uh, a few, a few individuals do utilize that parking lot. Yeah, you certainly don't need a parking lot that size.
Right.
Well, you know. Because I think parking is going to be more of a concern when you add six pickleball courts all available within walking distance of where they would park.
Great.
Well, you know what they say about parking, don't you? It's good, you know what they say about parking? It's great to have a parking problem.
Well, I understand that.
It's busy.
So. I like the concept of it being close and concept of everybody together because they would go from one to the next, to the next. And they're there.
We could have a mini Olympics, like this.
They get all hot and tanned and go to the pool. Uh, I also liked pursuing something for north of, of Wood Street. Um, so I was thinking if it was at north of Wood Street, um, at Butte Street, maybe we could add a dog park next to it, cause that's why I asked about the size, maybe multi-use. But we need to service the folks on the north side of Wood Street. There's a lot of homes up there. I think currently they probably use the school grounds.
Yeah.
Their park.
That is true.
But we don't have anything up there. So I'd like us to try to come up with a thought process of what kind of recreation we could put up there, uh, north of Wood Street.
Maybe we should hold a meeting right at the site and get, start vetting ideas.
We need to do a lot and I think.
We do.
Once, once we have a past sales tax, then we'll be able to start pursuing some more of these concepts. If we should have the funding available, do more recreation.
We could talk about that at the city hall, uh, at the, uh, what is it called again? The big meeting next Tuesday?
Town Hall.
Town Hall meeting.
Town Hall meetings in two weeks from Thursday.
Two weeks. We should, we could talk about it there too.
And the beauty of a pump track is for, for size, they come in various shape sizes. So you really do have the flexibility to do a small one, do, do all three parcels of, you know, Butte, French. Uh, they, they can fit in different, different areas. If we don't go with a prefabricated one, you're literally making turns and dirt mounds, um, that can be adjusted, they can be taken away. So you, you can, you can make a more permanent, well, you can spend money and have a more permanent fixture with kind of the prefabricated designs. They're still usually, I think, covered in a layer of dirt. They're just built and, and, uh, windy. Or you have somebody design one, um, on a, on a piece of paper and you go out and move dirt and compact it. And I think that's pretty much what Orland is, is they went out and they moved, moved dirt, made hills and put some chain, uh, blink of chain for a perimeter around it and that's what it is. So you do have flexibility in, in price as well as, as size on what you want it to be.
Sweet. Did your research come up with any numbers that were interest of folks that would like to use that pump track?
Are you meaning like, uh, renting out the pump track or?
No, I just.
How do you count?
Just how many people would be interested? Did you do any research into, um, who might want to use that? And for it?
Time, no, not.
I think we could possibly find comparative data to similar areas, but Orland, it's a non, non-tracked thing, right? You go, you show up and you do it, but there may be some, some similar sized areas and rural settings that we could look into to see there, that use. So that's something we can definitely.
I would imagine Hill has some idea of what volume of business was involved. Did he share that with you ever, Marty? What he thought the?
No, didn't. I, I think he just thought it would be a good additional recreational activity for youth in the community. And, and, you know, and he's got a strong background in that, so.
And I don't believe they like or slash allow, I don't know, it's not really regulated, but the, the bikes aren't supposed to be in the skate park as well. So it'd be a nice little something for the BMX guys to, to have.
I mean, and, you know, the other, the other possibility is if the council wanted us, we could take, you know, we could take the NEXUS study on the road and have, um, you know, get. you know, get public input on all the projects and try to work with the city engineer to develop preliminary budgets and see how far our dollar would stretch and.
Unfortunately, working by committee, we end up getting nothing done. So.
Getting input and being able to come back to the council and say, you know, 4,533 Willowites would like to be, would like a pump track versus some of the other things on the list or something like that. I meant it more like us taking the temperature of the enthusiasm of the community. That's, that could be a possibility or not. That could also not be a possibility.
Well, I, I think the item on the agenda is to get direction from the council to staff. And I would suggest that, uh, the council give direction that we would move forward with both of these projects. Um, certainly with lighting, the, the baseball softball fields. To ferret out what that real costs are going to be.
And what 208 numbers are absolutely meaningless.
And at the same time, a little bit more steady on, on a BMX pump track.
And, and also Musco lighting is the Cadillac of, of recreational field lighting. They are, Musco, M U S C O, however you say it. They are, they are like the top of the line when it comes to lighting stadiums and arenas. That means they're top of the line this way too.
Only the best for Willow's, but no, we did, uh, so, uh, Musco was the, uh, the company of choice. That's, that's who installed our initial lights. Um, so we, you know, looking through the, me and Carissa did a field trip down there, um, checked out the current lighting system. Um, and ended up being nice. And again, this is quote development stage. We would still do, we need other quotes. We need to look at other, other things. Or maybe a system that even benefits us a little better.
Find a local one.
But the price still for the Cadillac portion, um, Chris, I could talk about, you know, we worked with their company.
So Joe and I had spent time emailing with, uh, I believe it was Troy Schilling from Musco. And emailing back and forth, asking like just the overall gen, general cost of what, what would cost to automate these softball lights? And just for the materials and all that, the Troy had told us was around 20, 30,000. Just for the automation of these softball lights and then as well as installation, installation is well under what we had initially thought. Initially thought we would be using from this park and recreation development impact fee. So it was around 10 to 15,000. So in total it was, it would be around 38 to 43,000.
I actually lost a bet to Carissa on this. I thought installation was going to be more like 30 or $40,000 for the, the total. We worked with Chico Electric on a, on a site visit on, on getting them out there to get us the price of the install. So provided them, uh, Chris got them the, here's the, here's the tech specs and they went out and, um, gave, gave us the labor costs. So, um, you know, but obviously we would have, that's a general ballpark. But the good thing is I think between the pump track and this project, you know, the overall funding in the, um, park impact fee fund is, is pretty sufficient. And these aren't, these aren't as heavy as I thought they were going to be, especially for the lighting systems. So that was, that was a good positive thing.
No, that's, that's a positive, uh, Joe, uh, because you know, I, I, I was of the same opinion. I would agree with, 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 you know, your, your initial thoughts on the installation. Because, uh, you know, the softball fields are extremely well-used. The lights are used, uh, a lot, right? Uh, softball is very popular here and those, and those fields get a great amount of use and it's, uh, it's beyond time to up, upgrade the lighting system. Absolutely. So the, so the core, the core lighting systems are still in good shape.
Yeah, we've got some, there's a couple bulbs that are out, but, um, other than that, no, they, they work. Um, there's just, yeah, a couple bulbs. And the part of, good thing about this system too, um, with the lights is, is integration of a, a monitoring system. It alerts you when a light's out. It's, it's pretty smart technology. So besides the scheduling of things, it, uh, it'll let you know when there's an issue, when it's got a light bulb out. So that way it's not, obviously we get feedback on it. Um, another nice thing is this, this comes with, uh, I believe it's 10 years of support service as well included in this, in this price. So.
Very good. Nice. Thank you.
So we provided direction?
That's, that would be my recommendation.
I would, I would support Rick Thomas's or Mr. Thomas's recommendation that we pursue this and get it done. And I'd like the 208 Nexus study, uh, in the box. I don't.
You'd like it in the box?
Like to have, I'd like to have a copy of it.
Oh, certainly.
Yeah, please.
Yep.
Well, I would agree with, uh, with my colleagues, uh, you know, like I guess said Marty, you know, the pros and cons on, on both locations. I mean, it, it sounds like, you know, the Marshall Street location, Sycamore Park is probably a better location for the BMX. But I mean, you know, the, the pro and con less on both locations and we've talked before, uh, we've had internal discussions over the years about the, the city property of French and Butte Street for, you know, possibly a future park type, type setting, which makes sense. We, it's sorely needed. We have, we have no infrastructure in relationship to park. Parks, you know, like you say, north and the north end of, of the city. But, uh, no, very good. And I, I, the lights, I mean, to me, that's a no-brainer improving those lights. It's, you know, the softball fields are so well-used. Let's, it's time to upgrade. I'd be in favor of that. We, you know, where there is a health, healthy impact fee budget of, you know, approximately $336,000. But, uh, anyway, so yeah, these are preliminary discussions, but I agree with my colleagues. Go for it. Let's get something done.
Thank you for your effort.
Yeah. I hope you enjoyed doing it.
She had an amazing time.
Yeah. Chris, Chris, do you have any further comments?
Just, I used to play softball as well. So I, I know like the lighting is a little outdated and it just needs upgrading at the time.
Job, good presentation, good information. And, uh, we definitely appreciate and thank you for your service to City Willow's during this past summer. It's been a pleasure and.
Thank you guys for having me.
You're welcome.
Where you go from here? Have you signed up for college yet? Are you?
That's, I'm still in the mindset of I'm young.
Rub it in. Didn't she say she's young? So, uh.
Hold on to that. You're a senior in high school, right?
And.
You have classes last, or this week.
Good job. Very good. Well, we wish you, uh, all the best. Uh, in your, uh, in your, in your educational lifelong pursuit. So thank you very much. Okay. Joe, anything further? Reference to that, I know. Anything further? Okay. You have direction?
Yep.
You have third direction? Okay. Very good. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Chris.
This is parents.
Oh, really? Oh, you did a good job.
Yeah. Shout out, shout out to, good job, right?
I noticed the smiles started when she started to speak.
Did you try rocking on your heels like Doc said?
Give it a run.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Good job. Item 7B, 2024 community, community development block grant application, potential projects, discuss potential projects, programs and activities to include in the 2024 community development block grant application. Uh, before Marty, before I turn this over to Joe Benton, or community development services director, do you have any comments?
Um, just briefly, I wanted to say that this is like the first time for us to talk about the upcoming block grant. It is going to be released on August 30th and, uh, we'll have approximately two months to review it and make a race for the finish line to develop an application because it's basically going to be when the deadline comes, it's first come, first served after that date, which will be two months from August 30th. So we won't have much time to develop the application. So we're trying to get an early start even before it opens to talk to the council about potential projects. And if there's anything here at the end of Joe's presentation that you want us to bring back in more detail and a little more fleshed out, we can certainly do that. Um, and we would probably do that pretty immediately at the next meeting because the clock is going to be ticking after August 30th. With that, Joe?
Thank you, Marty. Um, I'll just add a little bit while Marty was on the, the topic of that, um, coming back, we'll, we'll be passing a resolution. We'll be having a public hearing, things of that nature. So this will be an ongoing, um, item probably for the next two months or so. Um, but with that, yes, we've got a final date of August 30th, uh, Friday. So, uh, that the NOFA is going to be released. That's notice of funding availability that really spells out all of the requirements of this cycle of funding. Um, it's been delayed multiple times. It's not unusual. Housing Community Development is, uh, has a lot of turnovers and, and been, been working to update their guidelines as well. So we're happy to hear that it, that it is coming out. Um, another, another news, um, differing from my, my previous presentation, uh, the updated HUD data, which HCD uses to determine jurisdiction eligibility, the city of Willow's jurisdiction is at 51.3% low mod percentage. Um, so what that means is, is that our jurisdiction is now fully eligible for all projects. So if we're below that 51%, we would need to be doing things to help a limited clientele, um, like the ADA sidewalks that I brought up before. Now that we're a low mod jurisdiction, um, the area benefit is all of Willow's. So if we redo a road, we've now met our criteria. It doesn't have to be specific to a clientele. So that opens up a lot of projects for us. Um, it's never the best sign to see the percentage go that way, but I believe we were at 49%, somewhere very close before. Um, and that was 2013 data. So they, they've updated to 2020. Um, so that kind of opens up, uh, the box of different projects. Um, so Marty mentioned the dates, yep, August 30th, and then the application period will open October 29th. So that gives us two months to look at the NOFA, determine the specifics of it. Right now we've, we're gathering data based off of CDBG office hours, which is a weekly meeting, um, combined with their, um, grant management manual, combined with their annual action plan that they submit to HUD. So we, we can have ideas of what funding is going to be and that's where these numbers come fu, come from. Uh, but we'll have a, a crystal clear picture once we get this NOFA released of exactly what we can, what they're offering and what we can apply for. Um,
And Joe, just to ask, so, so when the, the date comes on Oc, October 29th, it's like everybody's going to be racing to get in their application because it's over the counter, first come, first served. So.
Yes.
We don't, we want to use some of this two-month period when it's released to actually write the application, not still deciding up until, you know, October 27th or something like that. We want to have the time to actually write it. Yeah.
Is that a problem? I mean, I agree a hundred percent with you. And since we know that you, you have to finish first to be the winner, uh, we should expedite that. Could we not apply before?
It's just that there's, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of choices.
Yeah.
So we'll need your direction to narrow it down because we can't do 20 million things. So that's why I'm saying, you know, we're not going to want to come back to the council over and over again. You might need to come back again with a refined proposal on September. We might, September 10th, depending on your, you know, discretion.
Let us slow it down.
No, and there's certain things that are, you know, we, we don't have the application in front of us, but that we know that are going to be there, right? I know I'm going to have to list out the capacity of the city. So we can build these generic documents starting as soon as we know what the NOFA is. So there's things that we can work on, but as Marty stated, there's very specific things to what we're doing and what applications that we're going to be wanting to write narratives well in advance. So, um, and so I'm going to go over. So there is actually the over the counter. I'm going to start with that since we're on that topic.
Uh, we all read this. I don't know that you need to read it back to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, the only difference is, is there is a competitive, um, portion, which is a, a rated and ranked application. Um, and that's where a planning grant would come into play. Um, so those are on a little different of a timeline where the actual application um, would be due December 28th. So if we wanted to pursue a planning grant, which we can do two planning grants, a total of 300,000 per application for a total of 600,000 worth of planning applications. Those things would include, um, maybe zoning updates, land use designation, updating of plans, those kinds of things. So that's the smaller pot of money. The over the counter, uh, is one application. You get one shot on what you're doing. If you're doing a, like a public improvement project, your total max would be 3.3 million dollars. So if you applied for the maximum of two planning grants and one over the counter, you would be at the limit of what you can apply for at 3.6 million dollars overall. Um, our recommendation, we talked about a couple of things in this, um, in our staff report. Uh, one of the things we really want to focus on, it's been a, a topic of conversation and it's infrastructure. Um, which means we, we build it and we're, we're done with it, right? No monitoring of loans, none of those kinds of things. So. Initially we talked about sidewalks, still absolutely eligible project to do. We can do 3.3 million dollars of sidewalk if we want to. Herb gutter, we can do that. We can also now do roads because we're, we're 51% mod. So it doesn't have to be an ADA improvement like a sidewalk would be. So we can do drainage infrastructure, sewer infrastructure. We can, um, do, do all kinds of different infrastructure projects. We can do buildings and facilities if we wanted to, but we only get one application to do that. So it's kind of, um, you know, the big money items that we could use 3.3 million dollars on and, and fulfill that would be our road system, uh, working with our, uh, pavement management index and picking some of these really bad roads that we've talked about and doing complete digouts on them and, and resurfacing them. Um, so that, that along with sidewalks, um, we'd really like to bring something. You know, with a more forward direction of, of picking roads that we want to redo and, and doing those roads and some of the worst sidewalks around and doing a combination of those kinds of improvements.
Yeah, we've been talking for quite a long time. Joe's been part of it, but even before Joe got here, John and I talked about taking some, and you heard this last time, but I'm going to repeat it. Taking like these large patches in the city where there's just like a ton of, you know, potholes. There's one right next to Mayor Hanson's house that.
Yeah, there's a ditch bank out there.
Yeah, exactly. There's one behind the sheriff's office. That's it. And, and that instead of maybe, you know, because we don't, money is finite, doing whole roads like Lassen, and then that's your money for the year, trying to dig out these really problematic bad ones. And that we thought maybe we'd get more mileage out of that and, and dig out like a strip and, um, completely fill it back in and fix it. And we could maybe get more patches like that done because it does seem like the city has a fair number of those types of situations. And maybe we could stretch our dollars further.
Well, and those are streets, those are streets that don't qualify. Under the STIP, you know, STIP.
They're not, some of them are not at the top of our list actually for STIP and SB1s. Yeah.
I, I just, from my standpoint, streets and sidewalk rehab, I mean, we can go for the gusto, 3.3 million dollars. That'll get, that'll get us rehab.
Yeah.
Those are, those are definitely needs. And you know what our, our pavement management conditions, they're horrible and we're not alone.
And that would be a step program from the code enforcement one.
Yeah.
That was the other one we'd like to.
We, we can look into those. Yeah. And it did really with some of the, like with the code enforcement, we need the specifics of see what it's going to pay for, you know? So we, but that, and whether that's going to be put into a, a planning application. Or if it's an over the counter, the way that they categorize it, then we would need to pick or choose one of those, depending on what category it falls into. Um, could it be considered a public service? I don't know what that normally falls into for a program. Um, but we, but those, Friday we'll have the NOFA and we'll have those questions. But, um, yeah, the, the infrastructure project, and like I said, we've started knocking out these roads that, you know, this isn't preservation at this point, like our last projects would be. This is going to be rebuilds. What does that allow us to do in the future is concentrate our, our, uh, RSTP STIP funds on those preservations. You know, we can knock out huge chunks of these rebuilds. The roads are just really bad, but they're, cost a ton of money to do a full dig out and rebuild. Um, so 3.3 million, we can rebuild a good amount of roads.
If we are able to do roads and sidewalks and also submit a code enforcement application of some sort, depending on the criteria, is that of interest to the council?
Oh, but.
You're not interested in doing that as a second.
Money on that. I'm interested in code enforcement, but I, I, I had a lot of fun.
Do it in addition to is what I'm saying. Cause we won't know until August 30th if we can do more than one. If we could do the roads and sidewalks and also do something with code enforcement as an application, is that of interest?
So I don't understand that, but I, I'm open to the idea. I just, what I, if I may, when I read all of this, what I, what I would like to have out of this money is tangible, visible things that people can look at and say, I'm proud of the city of Willow's because look what's happening. Things are happening. And I had some questions, uh, and maybe this is the right time.
Yeah.
Uh, entry sign, uh, someday, sometime, some way, maybe through this process, we'll have a welcome to Willow's entry sign that will make people proud when they drive up and down the freeway. That there's a city at the intersection of 162 and I-5. Um, annexation, I don't know. I know annexation is difficult, I guess. But ultimately we have to expand the footprint of the city for the future revenue of this community and its long-term planning. And, and, and again, I particularly don't want to fund non-tangible activities, things that, oh, where did the money go? Well, we spent it on that. I want them to see it. Like what?
Like a planning document, for example.
I don't know where that fits, but, uh.
Well, it's one of the options you can actually apply for. So I'm just saying, you probably don't want to do that.
No studies, no paperwork, no wallahs that people go. No studies, no paperwork, no wallahs that people go, where did the money go? I want to be able to show him where the money went. And that's my, my end.
Well, I agree, I agree with your thoughts, David, because, you know, with the street repair, that's something that, that, you know, we all use, our citizens all use these streets, these streets every day, day in and day out. And, and, you know, we don't have the funds to repair them. So I mean, this is an avenue to do some major repair that, that benefits our citizens big time, big time. I think, I think it's important.
And to speak to the signage part of it, you know, there's, I think there's a, a close enough word of the day nexus to road rehabilitation that signs could be included within that project and not be one on its own. Because that's where you get into things of, we want to maximize the money in what we're doing. So if we're only allowed one application on our three point three million dollar project, we got to do the roads, but if we can link those into, you know, other, other things, right? Like, you know, your roads.
Signage would be key.
Yeah, yeah, and then we can.
Because that falls under economic assistance for.
Well, we'd be.
Everybody. For for-profit businesses.
But we'd be limited to basically the category of public facilities improvement. So we would only be able to apply for that. But within that realm, there's multiple different things that you can do from actual public facilities that benefit the community, like we're sitting in right now, or a library or streets, roads, sidewalks. But if you're able to say that the project is these streets, these roads, these signs, that's all one project application. So you would include those within your public facilities improvement application.
Because we could certainly make that nexus, because if you drive down Wood Street and you look at the sign that says Pacific, it doesn't say Pacific. It's blank.
We can do, we can do roads and.
And most of them going down that way. And so if we could include resigning or signing, posting of new signs.
Yep, crosswalks, ADA curb brands.
Good ways that have served their lifetime.
That's, that would be.
Those certainly could be done because if you're driving into town and you want to burn on any one of these streets, you can't read the sign.
It's a compliance issue as well, you know, we need to have these visible. So on that merit alone, we're not replacing a new sign. We're upgrading something that we should have. So those things can all be included within the street sidewalk application. We're not, we're not talking about doing a street and then also including redoing a, a police station. You know, that's, that's hard. But yes, if it's, if it's touching it, if it's connected to it, like I said, crosswalks, adding things, you're upgrading to what you want. Do all bike lanes if that wanted to be a thing, but you're allowed to, you're allowed to do that. Doesn't have to be totally focused. There's got to be a connection and you can put that all into one three point three million dollar application.
Include signs and somehow figure out, get freeway signage.
I think it's street directional signage, right? So we're letting people know where to go. You just, you make those connections and it's, it's, they're usually, there's not an issue with it usually.
Refurbish and enhance directional signage.
And another, nice thing with the road, there's no match requirement, but me and Marty talked about this earlier. And, you know, our six hundred or so thousand dollars that we've got set up for our STIP and SB one, it's basically, it would be, it's a match that we're going to do, we're going to spend that money as well. So we're, we're supporting our local funds using it to redo roads in conjunction with this project. So there's a nice, we're matching six hundred ninety six thousand dollars plus our sidewalk rehab.
Well, we can just talk about it. We can say, look, we're already doing this.
Yep.
And this is going to dovetail with what we're already doing.
Our application.
Correct.
Yes, it's, it's, it's a nice commitment that the city would make towards the project.
Marty and, and Joe, I sense that the concern is that we're going to lollygag and dilly-dally and talk this into death and run out of time. Could you give us some sort of an outline that says that we need this by that time and, you know, kind of direct us? Structure the response so the deadlines are.
We could do that, but I think what would, you know, if the council's amenable, I think that we, you know, I think you're giving pretty clear, concrete direction. I think what we need to do is wait for the August thirtieth date and the NOFA comes out and look at it and, and make, you know, ensure that we can do the direction that you're talking about right now. And I think we should just come back with a draft resolution based on your direction. And then on the September tenth meeting, and, you know, we can, and if, if it's, if it doesn't work or you want to do something different, you could continue it to the twenty fourth or, you know, but then if you like it and you take action and approve it, well, then we'll turn around and start working on the application so that we can be one of the first people at the deadline on October twenty ninth, right? First come, first served.
Everybody submits on the same day.
Well, I mean, I can tell you bigger jurisdictions, they're really organized and they do. They get in there and they got a lot of employees and staff and they hire, you know, grant writers.
Makes me think of an idea, which is sometimes in big projects, you bring in some expert outside help to help. And maybe there's somebody in there named Lori Pride or somebody like her who could, could be, you know, brought in to help somebody with, you know, just help so we don't become late somehow. That might be a good resource for us to invest in if there's three point plus million bucks.
Yeah, we can certainly look into that, yeah, and see what the options are.
We won't be relying on, on John, the city engineer. Just not saying that we're not going to be relying on anything else, but yeah, to develop these streets, to develop these numbers.
So if this is the kind of project you want, then coast land is who you want to develop because they, you know, do these in their site practically, right? It's roads and sidewalks, so.
And scoring criteria is scoring criteria. We, we get boxes we have to check. There's some narrative that you're scored on. What they want to see, because they're tired of people not spending this money in the past and they've, they've gotten their hand flapped from HUD on this, is shovel readiness. So we're not going to have full plans and specs going into this, but we're going to have enough doc, we're going to have as much documentation to submit with that because they want to, they want to know that you're ready to go on this project. Plans and specifications and all of those things can be paid for out of these projects. So that'll be a piece of it. But that's not saying we can't have, you know, we've already got our pavement condition index, PCI. We've got backup documentation, so generic estimate, engineers estimate, generic. And those kinds of things will be the supporting documentation that goes to it with all, with all the other generic info such as capacity, past performance, those kinds of things.
Well, and I'm sure you know this because the grants I was involved with, we would always determine by various means what the hot buttons were of the grantees.
Yes.
They really like this, this and this, and if you ask for that, you're just wasting it. So I'm sure we'll know what their hot buttons are.
CDBG grant's been around a long time and so is HCD, so we know their hot buttons.
You would.
Keywords.
Push the buttons.
So I think the big one, we're all on board. Code enforcement and planning capacity building. Can you, that's a recommendation, fluff that out for us?
Well, when we looked at, excuse me, when we looked at the entire laundry list of all the possibilities under CDBG, Joe and I talked about it and, and some of them are like to run programs. We don't have any capacity here to do programs. There just aren't enough people, right? So we thought about what were the, some of the greatest needs in the city and came up with the recommendations of the road sidewalks. I mean, certainly code enforcement, we get lots of complaints. We've talked about it here many times. If there was a way to write a second grant, because, you know, we are allowed to do, in some cases, multiple applications. We're going to find out on the thirtieth whether we could do that, that maybe a second application might be after the roads and sidewalks, might be a code enforcement one to support our code enforcement efforts in the city. And then the third one that made any sense out of the laundry list of things you can apply for was potentially some sort of planning. And I don't know, you know, in terms of capacity building, I threw in the design guidelines because we just, we get a lot of complaints from commissioners and public and about our design guidelines really need to be updated. In fact, I had a conversation with the planning commissioner today about it. So I just threw that in as an example. I don't know what they mean by capacity building. Do you know what, I mean, could we hire a planner with it?
It's kind of, yeah, it kind of, it kind of falls in the, I think, the same realm of developing plans as developing your, like if you were doing a, a general plan update, maybe or something like that, I don't think. What I saw is it doesn't directly relate to internal capacity building, but.
I don't think so, it usually doesn't.
Yeah, but also like Marty brought up with the, the zoning, like we could update our land use, our zoning maps, kind of bring in somebody to do a full on, hey, does this zoning work? Things of that nature. So you're, I know we don't want to do studies and.
Did the general plan, that should all be done.
Yeah.
For example, the general plan update is already done and it was approved a couple of years ago, right? It was a massive overhaul, but we actually still haven't updated our zoning maps. In fact, I just recently emailed the city engineer and said, hey, we need to update this. I mean, this is a two-year-old general plan and the zoning maps need to match the general plan. And so maybe something like this could pay for that, for example, his work.
And something I've done it, and so the way that the planning reads, the planning and capacity building reads is different than a grant that we got at a different municipality a couple of years ago. Because they specifically, there's language in there that says not to be used for like engineering of a specific project. But we, we did that. We got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do plans, specs and big documents for a parking lot. So I really want to wait and see if the NOFA is there because there may be an opportunity to apply for, hey, well, let's play, let's pay, we can get this two hundred and fifty K to develop engineered plans for all of our sidewalks or, or all of our streets or something of that nature. So it was, it was a little confusing on there because they did speak a lot more to updates of plans this go around. But I think that NOFA again, and those will be something we'll definitely talk about at that September tenth meeting as it's a little more clear. I think we, I think we just needed to be more clear for both.
It's not clear, I mean, and I think we can do this, that we should do sidewalks, roads, and then the signage that you talked about. That's an absolute number one priority for the council for this grant application. And then we'll explore other options if we want to do a second or third application.
To the pot of money for the over the counter, and they will be competitive. So it's not first come, first serve on those. It's turn it in in December, whatever I said, twenty eighth. And they rate, rank all those kinds of things. So that's when you're, you're going up against your competition on whoever submitted and they'll fund a certain amount of those projects up to.
The counter versus competitive.
The big money is over the counter, the road project is over the counter. So that's first come, first served. The planning and maybe code enforcement, which.
Be more competitive.
Competitive. The planning is a hundred percent going to be competitive.
Just to clarify.
Yeah.
The street, the street repair.
Yep.
Is over the counter.
Correct.
First come, first served.
Yep.
Very good.
Yeah, so we've run September tenth and got started on it.
What are the, what are the maximum available funds on the OTC?
The OTC is three point three million.
Yeah, it is three point three.
Yeah.
Good, because our street and I, I just, just to clarify, it was, Marty, you, you mentioned, you mentioned sidewalk, streets and signage. I, 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 I would like to see the priority, streets, sidewalks, signage. Is there any way to, you know?
Well, I think.
It's got to be one application.
Just be one.
But we can.
But we, we can bundle those things in there into one application because they're all streets related. It sounds like though you would like the majority of it to go to streets.
I would.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, we have a major problem with our, with our roadway infrastructure.
Yep.
And it's crumbling. It's getting worse and worse. And of course, obviously this doesn't through the state highway, one sixty two, right? It's a state highway.
Yeah.
So that's, that's Caltrans problem.
Correct.
And that's going to be rebuilt here in a couple of years now, you know, finally. But, but I mean, there's, you know, even on, on Tamea Street, which was resurfaced, completely rebuilt. It's been a number of years ago now, but Tamea Street was completely reconstructed. And look, look at some of the, you know, deterioration there. And, and a lot of it comes from wet years, right?
Yeah.
Luckily, luckily the drought ended and luckily it's been raining a lot, but rain does an enormous amount of damage to, to, to pavement.
Yeah.
Conditions, but, but anyway, no, yeah, I just, I mean, and that would be, you know, I agree with David, you know, thinking alike. You know, those are, those are, those are projects that, that our citizens see and they utilize and they use. Our streets are in bad shape and they need to be repaired, period. Of course, so are our sidewalks.
Yeah.
And then we have our signage issues as well. So we have a lot of issues here.
How about streetlights on the, on those sidewalks and those roads? We have some pretty dark places.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that, that is the total, the nexus is there for that. You just, your long-term electricity cost or if you pass that off, so I always just think of, of maintenance. So there are, there are costs, but there's, there's a safety aspect to it. And CDBG is a yearly application. It changes, depends on their funding and how it goes. We wouldn't be able to apply until we spend down half of our funds. But there's opportunity to do these things year after year after year after year.
Just to clarify, so you, you only get one over the counter.
One over the counter application.
So my recommendation is we come back on September tenth with the street sidewalk, whatever, that's the over the counter big one. So we can start getting to work on that because we want to get that in as soon as after October twenty nine. And then we'll come back with, with more fleshed out ideas about the code enforcement planning because the NOFA will have come out, we will know more and then there's more time because that's competitive and it's not due till December.
Twenty eight.
It's not due till December, so we have more time with that.
It does, yeah, we could just.
Do you agree with that plan?
I do. This design review guidelines, we've got the, the EIR and the general plan. We're updating the municipal code. We're updating the fees. So when somebody comes in, if we have more succinct and definitive design review guidelines, we've become a lot more pleasant to the applicant that walks in that says, okay, here's our design review, here is our fees, here is the general plan. And it's all set up so they can walk right through without a whole lot of question. And ultimately, if that's done, it should reduce the amount of time the planner spends doing on each of those projects. So it ultimately should turn into a cost. Fee reduction for all of that. So I, I'm kind of inclined that the design review is probably a good idea.
No, I, I agree. I was just going to ask Rick along the same lines. So we're, we're updating the municipal codes, right? Right, our development fees. Don't the municipal codes and design review kind of piggyback real, real closely?
Well. The design review guidelines is, I would call it more of a planning document. The code is the code. And so they, you know, the design review guidelines aren't in the code.
They.
I mean, they're referenced, aren't they? But isn't there a separate?
Well, they have to follow the code.
Correct.
They've, they've got, they've got the requirements in, in the municipal code and a portion of it for the.
It is a separate, separate document, isn't it?
I'm not sure if there is a complete separate document to it, but it is, it is explicitly called out in the, the municipal code itself with the colors and, and all of those things that need to be looked at.
I don't think that's anything we're updating as part of. I, did you see, we've only got the first draft of the zoning section and I haven't looked at it, have you yet?
Well, and this is, no, I have not.
Yeah.
If you wanted to go down the route, regardless, you know, it's, it can be a bigger project of even back to the zoning. If we wanted to, you know, I know we just talked about, oh, we did our general plan. But having somebody come in and do a, a deep dive analysis into is this the right zoning and, and where we're at? And I know those things are covered, but there's a, there's a million different documents that could be produced on these things. I'm going to use the bad word feasibility studies, those kinds of things. And then there's literal, you know, something tangible would be the assistance on, on land use development, how to annex, you know, or, or what would be a recommendation to annex a feasibility study on annexation? There's, there's tons of different things that can fit those.
Lake, I don't think Laughco is going to go for annexation right now, given, I mean, usually you have to have a developer at your doorstep to be. They're not, they don't let you just eat up, you know, more property just because you want it. And then of course you have to work with the county on a tax sharing agreement. And if you don't have development immediately, I don't know how you would share the taxes because that would be really challenging. So you don't usually, you don't usually annex until you have development, right? Ready to like build right on your doorstep and that's when you usually do it.
Just to go back with the NOFA releasing, there might be a potential to pay for actual engineered documents of a project. Go look at our drainage system and see what's up, needed to be updated.
That's true.
There's, you know, there's those kinds of, and what that does is gets you shovel ready for your next CDBG application. You know, we develop plans and specs for, I'm going to use a parking lot because that's the last one I did. Plans and specs for this parking lot. Now we turn right around and we go apply for the construction funding for those plans and specs that we developed. You know, we've, we've got ourselves in a shovel ready situation without spending general funds. So I'm hopeful that, that is an option too and could become a part of the discussion that leads to a more tangible plans and specs to a tangible asset.
I think it'll be also, I just think we can come back on the tenth and the NOFA will be out and we'll have a lot more information and be able to say what we can and can't do. And then also have a resolution for the road and street application ready to go.
Next. Very good. There's a lot there. So is direction clear?
Very.
At this point?
Yes, it is.
Gentlemen, any, any further?
Nope.
Good discussion, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to item eight, comments and reports, council correspondence. See the thank you card from TNT fireworks. I'm doing business as American promotional events out of Sacramento. Thanking the city Willow's on behalf of the nonprofit groups in our community and TNT fireworks. They want to extend their heartfelt gratitude for allowing the firm to fundraise during the July fourth celebrations. The city's support was instrumental in their efforts to raise essential funds and engage with the community in a meaningful way. And the firm looks forward to continuing their collaboration to benefit the community, signed by Joe with TNT fireworks and American promotional events. And moving on to any further correspondence, Marty, I'm not aware of any.
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Item eight B, city council comments. Item 8B, city council comments or reports. Mr. Thomas, would you like to begin?
Uh, I've been on vacation, so I have not had much, uh, opportunity to, um. Come up with anything that's appropriate for the city. On a personal note, I am now officially engaged to Brenda Crowe.
Oh, congratulations.
Now she said yes and.
Did this happen on a cruise ship?
Happened in, uh, on a cruise ship at the very end of Glacier Bay.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Very good.
All I have.
Happy for you. Mr. Vodden.
Thank you, Mayor Hanson. We have, the Rotary Club has, has the Glen County Superintendent of Schools as a speaker Thursday at the Tipsy Borough. In case any of you want to attend, please do. And, uh, I know there's a lot of material coming out of the Willow's Chamber of Events coming up. So. And then of course our town hall meeting, we should always promote that so we get good attendance and that's it. Thank you so much for everything you guys do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, David. Like to congratulate the Willow's Car and Bike Show Association for putting on an outstanding car show this year. The show and shine was, was well attended, was great. Uh, I saw Marty a lot over the weekend, uh, Friday night, working, uh, as a Rotarian and then Saturday as, as our city manager. And, uh, good job, Marty. Know the, uh, the association, it was a phenomenal show. Last count I had, there were 243 entries. The cars went all the way down to the ball parts, just like, uh, just like an old days. I, I entered, uh, my dad's, uh, uh, now ours, uh. The 34 Dodge that we rode in, uh, entered it in the car show. I had a weak moment Friday night. I had it down at the show and shine and. And some friends of mine encouraged me too. So a little more paint flew off when I, when I washed it again, a little more of the purple paint flew off. But it was, it was great. I've had a great day. Saturday was just a phenomenal day. And they just did a great job. I mean, the, the, the park was full all day long with, with a lot of people, a lot of vendors. A lot of cars. It was, it was fantastic. I just wanted to kudos to the entire association. Uh, and, uh, this year, uh, the mayor's award, uh, at the Friday night show and shine went to. Dave News from Woodland. He's an egg pilot down there. He and his wife were there. They're great, uh, great people. A, a beautiful red colored 1936 Chevy five window coupe. And it's a beautiful car, beautiful car. He also won an award on the Saturday show, a real award. But, uh, I, I can't remember where he was placed at the time, but, uh. I just, it was just, it was a great show, great show. And, uh, and my old girl, she did, she did a good job there. Runs well, runs well, needs paint, but we're working on that. But, uh, anyway, that's, that's, uh, really all I had.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I, I, now twice you have spent afternoons in the park, uh, in a booth called the City of Willow's. Would you give us an, an assessment of the time value or return and the, the value or whatever? I mean, and it could be honest in case it's just not glowing, but I'm curious.
It's perfect timing for item 8C, the city manager's report.
Would you do that in the city manager's report?
It's right now, I think.
That's called a segue.
Done. Okay. Great segue. Uh, yes, I have had the opportunity to table at, for the city willows at a couple of events on Saturday. I think that, um, you know, I, I think that stopping by a government booth when you're out on a weekend enjoying yourselves. Is not at the top of most people's minds. I also think a lot of people don't know me and so. They don't think about approaching the table unless there's somebody at the table that they know, which, um, so I have, you know, when, uh, the city clerk has joined me. When Lori Pride has joined me, uh, when Vice Mayor Hudson has sat there, there is definitely more. Or council member Vodden, yourself also, um, at the Lamb Derby. Uh, there's definitely more traffic and, uh, stopping by the, the booth than when I'm there by myself. That is certainly noticeable. On the other hand, I have gotten a lot of feedback from the staff and from just other members of the public who say. You know, I like seeing you here. I like seeing that the city is present and has a booth and is participating in these events, even if. Um, the event is a social event and a social, you know, kind of a, a social occasion. It's great to see that there's a booth out here and the city's available to the visitors and residents. So. You know, I think there's value in that for sure. The visibility has got a lot of value. Yeah. Um, so that's my report on that, but I have more. It's unusual, but I do. I do want to highlight again, although council member Vodden brought it up, that we do have a town hall meeting scheduled for Thursday, September 12th. From, uh, starts at 5:30 with a reception and six o'clock, there will be a presentation and discussion. Um, as the council knows, the financial sustainability advisory committee that we established earlier this year. And I've been working with on materials and flyers and websites and all of those kinds of things. Um, asked if, um, council member Thomas would make some opening remarks as the only council member who is not running for office this year. Um, and, um, help with the presentation and discussion. Uh, many of the FSAC members plan to, to be there. We've been in planning mode together as a group on the event and making sure there's material and information about. The city's finances and, uh, the measure I, sales tax measure. Um, so that's coming together. Um, council member Thomas and I will have to get together and meet and put together, um, some sort of presentation. So that'll be coming up soon. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was that on Thursday, September 19th, we have an open city hall crawl event. Um, and that is going to be, I guess, sort of turning into our second biannual because we had one in 2022. Um, we're going to have another one. This time we're going to include the wastewater treatment plant. We will have, it, it's a crawl, but there's no alcohol. We will have a passport to the city of Willow's. You get that stamped at the wastewater treatment plant, the corporation yard, the fire station and city hall. There will be, uh, a mocktail at the wastewater treatment plant and, um, uh, charcuterie board appetizers at the corp yard. Dinner hamburgers and hot dogs at the fire station and desserts here at city hall. And raffle prizes, we're putting together those raffle prizes right now. There'll be a DJ, lots of, um, events. The reptile show will be back. Water slide, lots of things for the family, um, family and youth and seniors and everybody to do. And it'll be an opportunity to learn more about the city and see what we have and what we don't have. We have a, we're going to have a fun little guessing game of how old is this equipment? And one of the questions is how old was the city manager when we purchased this equipment? So it'll be fun and you have to participate in order to get your stamp, um, and then win some great raffle prizes. So. I think that'll be another opportunity to showcase some of the, the things that we do here in the city as well as. Share with the public and the community, uh, the city's finances and measure I as well. I also just want to mention, because it might be of interest to people to know that we are getting substantial financial support for this event. It is sponsored by PG&E Waste Management, Cal Water and Coastland, our very own city engineer. Have all contributed substantially to make this event possible. Uh, so. We will be getting a lot of financial support from them in order to do this. Um, I think everybody knows that we have a financial situation and we shouldn't be sponsoring an event like this ourselves. So that's a positive. It'll start at 4:30 and go until 7:30. Um, and then I think the only other thing I wanted to mention is. That I am working directly with Caltrans on some sort of an event for the first week of October, you know, just before absentee ballots come out. Around Sycamore Park and around the event that's, um, you know, going to be the construction work that we'll be doing over the next 12 to 18 months. To, um, implement that $4 million grant and upgrade the pool and pickleball courts and tennis courts. So. I'm working with Caltrans to develop an event. Uh, we won't, we don't have a, you know, we haven't awarded a construction contract yet. So. It's, um, a little early for the golden shovels. It's obviously a little early for the ribbon cutting. So we're still working on exactly what that'll be. Maybe we will have some renderings of the future park. Hopefully, um, some of the council, all the council will be there to support that and speak to the upcoming project. Um, we just signed the other day the contract with Wildland. So the design for the park will be getting underway post haste. And, um, stay tuned on when exactly the date and time for the early October event will be. And I think that. Concludes my remarks for this evening. I think I've made up for the last six months of not saying anything.
Thank you, Marty.
Marty, quickly, uh, is there food on the town hall meeting? Is there food?
Yes, there will be. There'll be a charcuterie board, some cookies. Um, I believe one of the FSAC members is going to make some homemade desserts. Uh, decaf coffee and water.
And that's here or at the ark?
That is at the ark.
The ark.
The reception will be at the ark starting at 5:30 and then the meeting itself and presentation will start at 6.
I've been encouraging people to come. Everybody could come, right? I mean, if they own a business.
Everybody should come. It's open to anybody. It's a town hall meeting. Yeah. I think if you're interested in learning more, we'll have hard copy materials. Um, we've got, uh, little handouts with our QR code for our website. And so yes, everybody certainly is welcome. I sent the flyer, um, which will be going out to the council. I don't think I've given it to you at, yet announcing the event. Has already gone to, uh, the Valley Mirror and the city clerk is distributing it to the chamber. And other civic groups and asking them to share it with the announcement with their network and e-distribution list. So we're trying to get the word out as much as possible about the event. Um, and I'll be working on a press release this coming week as well as trying to contact, uh, Chico Action News as well to see if they'll. Cover the event. In fact, both events actually.
So Marvell has a bulletin board, uh, coffee place, Starbucks has a bulletin board, those kinds of places. So if you give me a bunch of them and I'm out of the tax one again.
Sorry?
The one, the tax thing I've been handing out, I'm out of them again.
Great. Well, that's excellent. There's a whole bunch more. I'll get you some.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Marty. Anything further, David?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. And one, uh, anything further, Marty?
That's it for me.
Thank you. Good report. Uh, one, one item that I, uh, on my notes here that I, that I missed under, under my report very briefly, I'd just like to. A shout out and a thank you to our Willow's Public Works team for having Jensen Park in great shape for our show.
They will appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. You know, they were, you know, a lot of, I know a lot of work went into it, just like at, at Central Park, the old 2030, we used to call 2030 Park. For National Night Out. They did a great job. And it takes, you know, it's a 20 acre park. It's, it's, it's a large park and it takes all hands on deck and did a great job. And, uh, also supplied support, uh, throughout the week, throughout the event as well. And I saw, saw our folks down there working and keeping things rolling. So good job. If nothing further, moving on to item nine, uh, adjournment. The time is 8:04 PM. Meeting adjourned. Have a great rest of the week. Good night.